Okay, thank you. Despite our best efforts, we're back. All of you have been streaming our shows on Netflix. We're back here live, to everyone's disappointment, including the applicants and the professionals, as well as us, but here we are. So, off we go. And our first item right now is a public hearing. Excuse me, this is the planning board meeting for September 17, 2019. Our first matter is a public hearing. This is the Oliveri residence. This is a request for an approval of an existing accessory apartment located 541 King Street. And is there a motion to open the public hearing?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, do we have an applicant?
Come on up, Mr. Oliveri.
How are you? Good, good. Identify yourself.
Yeah, I'm waiting for my architect. He should be here in a few minutes.
Should we wait? We have a couple of quick things that we can do?
That's fine. I appreciate that.
While we do that?
He said he'd be here. Just came in.
Good, we'll do that. Our next item then, I guess we opened the public hearing. What do we do, Jennifer? Are we technically...
Pause it?
Pausing it?
Yes.
Not a good start for the new season.
You can table it to be recalled.
Okay, do we need a motion to that? Tabling? Okay, we're tabling, okay. We move on to our next item. This is 767 King Street, Chiselhurst subdivision lot number six.
I am recused from this application.
Okay.
It's two seconds issue.
This is an application for a site plan amendment, wetlands permits, steep slopes permit amendment, tree removal permit, and stormwater pollution prevention plan, 767 King Street, New York Route Plan 20. And the applicant has sent a letter to us in saying that they're not quite ready yet with some of the tasks that were assigned to them, and they've asked to withdraw the adjourn the public hearing to November 6, 2019. So if you're here for that application, we will not hear it this evening. It has been adjourned. So I guess we will just continue the public hearing until November 6, was it?
Yes.
Okay, good memory. All right, very good.
Do you have to, do they have to vote on that continuous?
Just adjourned, okay. And our next matter is the CATS application. This is an application for a site development plan for accessory apartment approval, 275 Croton Dam Road. And again, another unhappy participant who has withdrawn the application, and so we will not hear that public hearing. Do we have to do anything officially to close this? I mean, they've withdrawn the application.
No, the applicant submitted a letter officially withdrawing the application, so it won't be considered on any further agendas of the planning board.
Okay, so it's going. Good. Has he shown up? Okay. We'll move now to our next item, and this is an informal hearing for a pending application. This is the application for Surland, application for a preliminary subdivision plat, steep slopes permit, tree removal permit, stormwater pollution prevention plan for a property located at 10 Kisco Park Drive.
Is that mine?
Yes. Operating like a buzzsaw here tonight.
I see that. I just called Michael Campbell, it's my engineer, you know, he's only five minutes away, and he said he's on his way.
Okay.
He's here.
Well, let's move on to our next item.
You know, we could move on to time extensions, because we're waiting for the most recent resolution.
Okay, fine.
So why don't we move on to time extensions?
Great. We'll go to our time extensions. The first one is from the Chapala Central School District. This is a request for an extension to submit final subdivision plat approval, Button Hook Road and Sabina Road. Bob, you don't have any issues with the request? Okay. Anyone have any issues at all?
No, not at all.
About the request? If not, is there a motion to grant the request? Oh, there's somebody here.
Sorry. Mr. Chairman.
I hate when people interrupt these applicants like this. We're on a roll.
One small thing, members of the board, Kristen Motel from Cuddy and Fader for Chapala Central School District. We had submitted in our letter the request for the 90-day extension. We would request that that date be 90 days from September 6, which was the time to submit the final subdivision plat, so that 90 days is December 5, 2019. There was a misprint in our letter which reads November 4.
Okay.
Repeat that date, please. December 5, 2019, which is 90 days from September 6.
Okay. Right. With that change in their request, is there a motion to grant the extension?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you for dropping by.
Our next item is Citron, formerly Manic subdivision lot number one. This is a request for an extension to sub, to submit preliminary subdivision plat, final subdivision plat, not plant, integrated plot plan, and stormwater pollution prevention plan approvals for a property located at 123 and 127 Western Drive. We've seen this a number of times. Are we still okay? They're working diligently to get whatever they have to get done? Okay? No one's here for that application. Is there a motion to grant the extension that has been requested?
So moved.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We then go to the next extension request. This is for Monaco. This is a request for an extension of time to complete the requirements of the reference site development plan for signing for property located at 13 Station Place. The only issue I have in this is, would they be looking to extend it for longer than just October 31, or is that just the requirement? They're looking for an extension to October 31. Can they, should they not be looking for an extension longer than that? Can they?
There's no direction regarding this extension in the code. This is just, these are courtesy extensions that you have historically granted. If you would like to provide them more time, I'm sure that they would accept that.
Well, it's just, you know...
They're diligent, I can tell you, he's diligently working with DOT, trying to, you know, get response and documentation regarding requests that the planning board had made.
Okay. So, we'll see Chuck Moore off, that's all. Okay. Is there a motion to grant the applicant's request for an extension to October 31?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Back to the top of the deck, or do you want to do minutes?
Minutes.
Well, yeah.
No one's here, so we'll do minutes. Wow. That'll teach you guys for coming in late, you have to listen to us through minutes. Okay. Our first set is from May 21, 2019. Anyone have any questions or changes on the minutes of May 21?
I have one comment. Page eight. Line 14. Is the Dersch property, it says wood, but it could, makes much more sense, if I recollect. So if you could change the W to a C, that would be very nice, thank you.
Great.
And that's on line 14 of page eight.
Anywhere else anything? If not, with that one amendment, is there a motion to adopt the minutes of May 21, 2019?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We move to the minutes of June 4, 2019. Any changes, questions? If not, is there a motion to approve the minutes of June 4, 2019?
So moved. Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
We move now to the July 2 minutes.
I had a question on page 8, lines 28, 29, 30, where we talk about the property exceeding the approved clearing and grading limit line. Do we also want to mention here that it exceeds the development coverage?
I retain it.
Can you redo the line number, Sheila?
In the discussion that begins on line 28 on page 8, line 30, where the minutes reference that the clearing and grading limit line has been exceeded, should we also mention that the development coverage for the property has been exceeded as well?
Might I suggest after the approved clearing and grading limit line, as well as the development coverage?
Yep. I like it.
I had a question, I just don't see it in here, but I think we talked about it. What did we finally decide with regard to the parking, the street parking in front of the Monaco application?
The town was going to, the applicant was going to work to accompany the applicant, the town was going to accompany the applicant in discussions with New York State DOT, and the applicant was going to set that up and invite the town.
Right, but was that something that we set forth as a condition for approval? Was that just our preference?
It was a preference.
Okay, so it's not something that we would put in here?
Correct.
Okay.
Is it in the resolution? It is in the, it is in the resolution. It's a condition that the applicant...
That does the invitation.
Does this, yes.
At least give it a shot.
Yes, give it a shot. The applicant, but there's no must do it.
But we couldn't, exactly.
Yes.
Because we knew it was an ask.
Right. And I can tell you, the applicant has contacted me and said that they have been trying to contact New York State DOT, and they've gotten mixed messages from DOT as to whether or not they can or cannot, and he's asked it forward writing, which is why they're asking for the time extension.
Okay.
And that was just a limited part of it, the DOT allowed it.
Right.
I spoke to some permit engineers, and they didn't let me know that anymore.
Right.
Just so you know.
Yeah. Well, that's what you told us when they got to him.
It's a big safety issue.
Any other questions, changes, amendments? If not, is there a motion to adopt the minutes of July 2?
So moved.
Second?
As amended.
Yeah, as amended.
Indeed.
Yep.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
And finally, the minutes of July 16, for consideration. Sabrina, did we ever get a letter from Steve as Dick requested on page 2, lines 43 and 44? Dick asked Steve to write a letter outlining why he believes the sweatland is worse off than others in the town?
I had asked Steve for that letter, we have not received that.
Okay.
All right, I have a small thing on some page here. Overall, these minutes are very clear and very well written, and I appreciate that. It makes it easier to go through, and just to prove that I read this one, in part, there's an apostrophe. There's your point. What page? Page 4, line 59. After a board, apostrophe, then an S, is my suggestion.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else anything? If not, as amended, is there a motion to approve the minutes of July 16?
So moved.
Second? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we shuffled the deck here. We'll move, we're just running out of stuff to do here. So we'll move next to number four. That's our informal hearing for the Surland application. Again, this is an application for a preliminary subdivision plat, steep slopes permit, tree removal permit, stormwater pollution prevention plan for a property located at 10 Kisco Park Drive.
Good evening.
Sorry to wake you up.
I was at my office working, so I'm a little bit rushed right now, just because I didn't expect it to be this fast. But, good evening. Generally, what we did mostly, and what was most important, was the studies of the driveways in different locations when we went back. And, you know, we approached each one, and we saw what it would mean to be grading the man, and how it was doing. I don't have stuff to go up on the wall right now, because I didn't grab a thumb drive, which I expected. But you have all my drawings. So, and since this is informal, maybe it'll work. But we studied all of them out, and we found out that just the grading alone, coming from Kisco Park Drive, or from, even worse, from Woodland Drive, causes great detriment, and it's taking out all the trees, it's a natural forest there, up through the right away, except on the other side. One of the things that we want to get to do at this meeting is to get you to go out and look at the site, because I think if you saw the site, it would answer a lot of your questions. And you could see where, you know, the different scenarios for the driveways, which is pretty important, because it's getting hard to land on something, and we don't know what we're going for.
Right. Fair enough. Okay. I had a couple of questions on the environmental assessment form.
I, I need to go back through it again, but go ahead and ask.
Oh, I can go through it, just a couple of questions. So, page 5, Sabrina, there's a question here, these are standard questions. Will the proposed action generate liquid waste? Do we consider septic as liquid waste, or no?
No, because there's another answer of how waste will be treated in the form. Mr. Chairman, I would like to point out that in my memorandum, there were requested changes within that EAF that the applicant is being asked to make.
Ah, page 2.
On page 2 and 3 of my memorandum.
There's quite a few, and they do have to be addressed.
Do you need me to summarize them?
Yeah, you can summarize them. I had another question, and that was specifically on one area, which I think is really critical. Maybe you've handled this on, did you talk to, speak to the issue or the answer of the average depth to bedrock on the site?
I'm sorry? Yes.
It strikes me as unusual, when we see so many outcrops on the, on the site plan, how we could end up with an average depth to bedrock of 6 feet when there's outcrops in the roadways, outcrops on the property that we're looking at.
We've asked them to explain that. That is page 4 of 13 D.2A8, and they need to fulfill that answer.
Okay, I see there's E2A on page 11 of the EAF.
Yeah. Yeah, there's several different locations.
Good. Why don't you run through your memo then?
Okay. For the board's reminding, this is an unlisted action, which requires a full environmental assessment form. The applicant has provided a form. There's several areas that the applicant needs to add corrected information or more supporting information within the EAF to make it a document that we can understand and circulate for lead agency purposes. On page 2 of 13, they need to add the stormwater pollution prevention plan approvals to be issued by the planning board. On page 2, they need to look at the regional agencies and include the New York City Department of Environmental Protection as a listed agency. Page 3 of 13, they need to check, yes, that the proposed use is a permitted use. Page 4 deals with the rock outcrop, rock outcrops, and the applicant will need to explain how the outcrops will be addressed. Page 8 of 13, D2Q, little 2, has not been answered. On that same page, D.2.R. has not been answered. Page, same page, D2M.I. has, no details were given on the source of the noise or the duration of the noise during construction. Downlighting has been indicated as the only outdoor lighting. The lighting detail, along with the proposed location of the lighting, should be included in the plan set. The plans indicate, page 11 of 13, this gets back to the number of rock outcroppings, detail what proportion of the site is comprised by bedrock outcroppings. Page 12 of 13, E2N, New York State DEC has designated at least part of the property as locally significant large forest patch. The applicant should further investigate any adverse impacts to locally significant forest. The answers for question on page 12 of 13, E3.D., must be answered, there's no answer there. And most importantly, the applicant needs to sign the environmental assessment form, so include a signature. I did a summary of their environmental, their alternatives, their access alternatives, they did an analysis of three access alternatives on the site, one from Crow Hill Road, one from Woodland Road, and one from Kisco Park. They, they went through each one, there was a table that was included, that included limited information. One of the columns that was not included was regarding the number of slope disturbance, the amount of slope disturbance regarding each alternative, and I think that that is essential in comparing the alternatives that they are, that they are comparing. So we need some more information. They identified that alternative 3 would not be feasible because of extremely steep slopes. I've asked them to quantify that. In addition, they claim that there's not enough width in the area for a common driveway, and I said that the claim regarding width is really unsubstantiated at this point, and they should really provide more detail on that.
Is that going to Woodland?
Where is Woodland?
Leading from Kisco Park.
That's 2, I think.
Access from Kisco.
No, that's the second one. We actually made grading left and right, but it means clearing all the trees.
Michael, there is, that is, this is the access from Kisco Park.
Yeah.
I think you need to quantify why there is not enough room for the common driveway. I've asked you, I've asked you, this was different than the one regarding clearing of the trees.
Oh, okay.
The applicant has identified in their submission materials that the preferred approach is from Crow Hill Road. This approach includes construction of a retaining wall, maximum height of roughly 2 feet, along than more, more than 3/4 of the property adjacent to this property. And it assumes that the future access to this lot for that property owner would be in a certain location. I don't know that they can make this assumption without communications with that property owner, so I've asked for more information, more plans as to how the neighboring property owner would use their property, because this statement is misleading in their submission. The preliminary subdivision shows that the water line to the proposed lot would originate from an existing water service connection in Kisco Park Drive, follow a north-south pathway, and a 10-foot wide water easement along the eastern property line of the existing lot and the future lot. Rather than locating the water line in a private easement, it would be better, planning practice to locate this water line in Robin Hill Road, as there may be several other lots that could take advantage of this water line. The applicant noted that the proposed location had been agreed to by the Commissioner of Public Works. In my conversations with the Commissioner of Public Works, he's told me he has not yet agreed to this, that he has asked for additional information, and he is waiting for more information to be provided. So the applicant should provide the planning board with the documentation, Michael, that you actually have had conversations with Jerry Marshall. We have septic pump-out data that is required for the town to keep track of, because we do have land area within the New York City watershed. That we have indications that Mr. Surland's house does need to be pumped out, it has not been pumped out since 2011, and so we've asked that either documentation be submitted to the town that it has been pumped out, or pump out the existing septic system. As presented, the proposed lot conforms with setbacks and coverage requirements. The house footprint for the lots across Robin Hill Road should be depicted, he has addressed this, but it includes unfinished lot lines, so close those lot lines on one of the plans, it's not finished.
I don't know why.
The plans indicate removal of 15 trees. A separate landscape plan should be provided, which includes the required tree replacement. The applicant provided the plan, but it should contain inventory information as outlined in the tree report. I can tell you, Steve Coleman did do a memo to the board regarding the tree, so I'm not going to repeat any of that here. And I said, once the applicant provides the required changes to the EAF and the mitigation information, you would be in a position to declare your intent to be lead agency. That's my comments for now.
Okay. A question.
Sure.
Maybe it was in Steve's letter, but there's an assertion that a fair number of trees have already been knocked down, and is that included in the whole thinking too, that that would have to be looked at to see if that was a violation?
Excuse me, can I speak to that?
If you introduce yourself.
Sure, I'd be happy to, and thank you. I'm Phil Surland, I'm the owner of the property, I'm the applicant. When I saw that letter today, it troubled me greatly. It is completely, utterly, totally false. It happens that I personally care a great deal about trees, and when you tore the property, what you're going to see is you're going to see a bunch of trees that are 80% dead, that any normal person would have cut down by now, that are still standing there on my property, because I can't bear to cut down a tree. I'm serious. I have a fight with my wife constantly about a tree that's leaning towards our house, and that's 3/4 dead, and she says it's going to kill us someday, and I won't take it down. What was in that...
I don't think it will, if I may interrupt, kill someone, but it may mean that you sleep in the attic from now on.
You're absolutely right. It was a doghouse, except we don't have one. But what was in that memo was absolute, just total lies, just total libel per se. And I could show you this property, I can show you that, there's just, there's no basis for that. And I cared tremendously about trees.
If I may, that was comments made from neighbors who live on the street. It was not contained in Steve Coleman's memo. Summarizing Steve's memo, he did request additional information, but that, that...
That wasn't Steve at all.
I understand that the board was, was asking the question, but just to let you know, the origin of that was not...
The origin of that was, the letter that I received today, a copy of today, it was written by Mr. Rossi, who's the attorney for Mr. and Mrs. Rich. It had absolutely nothing to do with Steve Coleman, and I thought his analysis was excellent.
Okay.
So we need, we are going to have a site visit, I assume?
Yep. I'd love to show it to you, including all the 3/4 dead trees.
Excellent, thank you.
Bob, you have comments?
Basically, to make it short, we, the stormwater report is incomplete. For example, there are certain areas where he shows stormwater infiltration. Picking up after driveway, I recommend that you go further down the driveway to pick up the additional 110 feet.
There's one we're down the driveway to go, except at one spot, and that's too shallow, so I can't even count the one that I do put in. That's the only place I have shallowness, everywhere else is...
Did you do deep test holes there?
Yeah, we did deep test holes, and we did the percolation test there, right in that one place, and that was it. That was on the driveway. The only other place where we actually did...
Well, we're going to have to see it, but if I investigate more there, you could always put in solid boxes and hold the water and let it at a slower rate, but you got to pick up that water. If it's 110 feet, it's going to go right on Crow Hill Road, right around the Bay of Turn, so that's incomplete, so you have the coaltarian out there to take a look at it and witness that, so we can confirm it, but you have to come up with a plan B on that.
I know. Okay. We already are reducing the amount of water that goes down by half, meaning that we're half as much water is going down that part of the driveway. Even before there was a driveway there, we're reducing it by half. So we're doing quite a bit to reduce it.
So we'll have to take a look at it, and we have to go out there and take a look, and we have to draw our own conclusion if there's any block or...
Yeah.
ST2 applies to that, basically, what I'm doing right now for the percolation test, I'm going to refer to the Westchester County. Best management practices because over the past year, some of the infiltration rates based on DEC has come in way too fast.
Well, we already reduced it, but you requested it, yeah.
If board decides to put the infiltrators and stormwater in the right-of-way, you'll have to come up with some maintenance agreements to keep, keep track of that.
Have we done that before, where we put infiltrators like this in the right-of-way?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Yes. ST4, based on review of the GIS, I would recommend that you take a look at the areas you're going to clear, where you're going to put the septic. Because that should be taken into account with the curb numbers. ST5, standard 5,000 square feet, if you get the NOI. ST6, just showed it was a disturbance. G1, water service line, if that's the route you're going to take, obviously you have to get town council to review the maintenance agreements for that over the lot one. G2, big item. A lot of times you just use, the engineers use just the standard posted speed limit. I'm going to recommend that you get a consultant, PTOE, that looks at traffic all the time, and outline the four areas they should really look at, because the speed limit along that road is probably higher than the posted. So basically, to make this real quick, the engineer will have to determine the 85th percentile speed, that's sort of like the prevailing speed, and that's the speed most of the people use along that roadway, which is probably no doubt greater than 35. And based on that number, when they come up with it, have to do a whole study and actually-
And if they're going to commit, they're going to do the whole study, yeah.
You'll have to determine the stop and site distance, and the intersection based on that distance, that speed. Also to, I think it's just pretty bad traffic planning, if the driveway that's going to come down from your residence ties into another driveway, which comes out on the Crow Hill Road, which has another curb cut 30 feet apart. Anytime you have two curb cuts that close together, creates a safety issue. So I would think, what I'd recommend that the applicant, your engineer do if you hire on one, is to come up maybe with just one curb cut.
If that's what he recommends, we'll see what he recommends, yeah.
But that might be taken into account, the property owned by Pasquale. At least right now, you have three properties coming in, and two curb cuts-
We'll have to get the recommendation from the traffic engineer if we're going to go there.
So that's a big item.
Yeah.
G3, the hit on Sabrina's comment before, to agree with that, it's a problem with that, the low estate and retaining wall, because it's going to cut off the property's use, which is for the riches. G4, the applicants responded by several reasons about the cost for the removal for the water main and the two-inch water surface. I'd recommend, the only sure way to find out how much rock you're going to hit out there, no matter how many outcroppings you see, is to do tests.
Sorry, do what?
Deep tests.
Deep tests.
Deep tests, or-
Well, that's going to, you know, you go every-
Or some seismology of some sort.
Excuse me?
Some seismology, to get an idea as to what the rock terrain looks like.
You can do core, coring, or you can do deep test, deep tests are a little bit less expensive, you don't need the full equipment for that. I'd recommend that, and then, Michael, you get a much better idea how much it's going to cost.
Yeah, they could dig down the four feet to see if they can go down.
I would highly recommend that.
Would you? Recommendation about the nature of the test grid that they would do, I mean, how many feet apart would it be a grid?
Well, generally when you're doing a water main, you do a standard distance every so often.
Okay.
Every 50 feet, every 75 feet, based on field conditions.
Could we be certain that you're comfortable with what they-
Yeah, he would prepare a map, and basically where they're going to do them.
Okay.
And then we would confer with him, witness them.
Well, along those lines, and I think I raised this last time, the home is currently planned and configured as over toward the, I think it's the western side of the property, and really up against the zoning setbacks. If we know, you know, we have this septic area that's over on the eastern part of the property, if we shifted the home to the east, and closer to the property that it's being subdivided from, then the driveway run up from Kisco Park Drive would be considerably shorter, and we shift the septic then to the west, so we eliminate all those conflicts that we have with Crow Hill Road. And I think last time I had actually asked for some sort of study of having a driveway running off the existing driveway, not even going up Robin Hill Road, off the existing lot, and circling around, because we already have some impact there. Now, whether or not it would start on Kisco, or just come up on Robin and come over, but that would mitigate an awful lot of the steep slope issues, the traffic issues, the length of the water line, et cetera. And we had asked for, I had asked for it last time, so we don't have it here as one of three. I think we have here some, you know, the one to Woodland is just an unrealistic alternative that's designed to show us that it would fail, and I think even the way it's designed here on Robin Hill is, of course, you're going to clear it all the way down, then you're going down to this western spot. So again, if the home shifted to the east, if you had that home 10 feet away from the eastern side, and then had your septic down at the other end, I think it eliminates the wall situation that we have with the riches, it eliminates the Crow Hill Road intersection issue. Instead, the driveway would feed on to Kisco Park Drive. Mitigation in terms of tree impact would be substantially less. So I think there's much to be gained by taking a look at that study in a realistic fashion.
We'll study it, we'll study to make sure, yeah.
Mr. Sterling, can you please step up to the microphone?
Sure, sure.
Thank you.
Sure, sure. I was just going to say, I think the questions you're asking are very important. What I very much would like to do is be able to show you the site, because when you take a look at it, a lot of what you're thinking about will make much more sense. It's very hard to see it on these two-dimensional things, you know? And so, you know, if we can do that, as soon as you're capable, then, you know, then we can, you know, research all the other possibilities that-
But again, my comments were being made, really dovetailing and leveraging off of what Bob said, and that was looking at a grid, and what Tom was suggesting, as we look at this bedrock, it's going to tell us also what realistically we're looking at here. I see two deep hole tests for the septic in the eastern part, and on, basically, not in the middle of the property, but on the sides.
Yeah.
And I'm sure they're fine, but that's not to tell us that we don't have a perfectly good perk on the western side, and maybe we can change this around. Again, if the rock show is something else, and that we're basically at bedrock on the entire property, then we have some other issues and questions. But it seems to me on a two-dimensional basis-
Yeah.
-there's some room here to take a look at some alternatives that could really save us tree impacts, steep slope impact, cost to you, traffic issues, impacts to the rich family in terms of a wall, all kinds of things.
I understand exactly what you're saying. And, you know, I have complete sympathy with it. As I told you before, I hate taking down a single tree, and so, you know, if there's a way to do it with fewer trees, I'd love that. And so if, but as I said, when you see it, it'll make, it'll make much more sense than these two-D pictures.
Sure. Okay, thanks. Did you have other comments, Bob?
I have a few others.
Yep.
The applicant is stating that it's going to be very expensive to put in the water main in the right-of-way of-
We're more worried about the, not just the expense, but what it's going to do.
Speaking of the microphone.
There is, there is no way to loop that water main, there is no water main on the other side. The water main, the water has to come from Kisco Park, because on the other side, it's in the right-of-way beyond the lots that are across the street. So there's no way to connect those in any kind of form or fashion. So you would have a main sitting up on top, that would be just feeding one house, and what are the chances of another house coming up there? Not very good.
But, you know, we can debate that all night here.
Yeah.
But what I'd recommend, if the planning board wants us to do it, why don't we sit down with Sabrina, Jerry, fire officials?
Absolutely, sure. That sounds like a great idea.
And discuss all of this at length, diligence, and then report our findings back to the board.
Right.
And we can at least reach that, approach that one aspect of it, and then you guys can take that into account with all the environmentals.
Right. Because the greatest comment was that her preference would be to see it on Robin Hill Road anyway, to perhaps access other lots of the property owners, so it's not just a solo mission here.
Well, let's get everyone's input.
Yeah.
And we'll come back with a memo to you, and you can decide what you want to do. Couple of minor ones, street opening permit, obviously, once we decide where you'll tie into. Obviously, once everything's all said and done, you'd have to provide an engineer's cost estimate. I couldn't see anywhere where you put all the doubts, but I put in there as, again, as a gentle, friendly reminder.
Oh, the notes.
To the note, yes.
And I, you know that.
Those are my thoughts.
Okay. So we have a memo from Steve. Do you want to just indicate what the gist of that memo was?
Sure, I think that a lot of Steve's comments regarding submission of information, they did submit a report from Alstead, is that he really needs some changes, some additional The, Alstead had identified a tree replacement for the Crow Hill entrance in the proposed lot, and he provides a plant list, which is assumed that what has been proposed for tree replace, what is, which, the assumptions have been made as to what is needed for tree replacement. He said he needs more information. The tree plan shows which trees are to be removed, and which trees are to be protected. However, it does not include the location of proposed new replacement trees, species, and quantities. Additional information is still required.
We can't, oh, excuse me, I'm sorry. We have trouble doing that, because we don't know where the driveway is going to end up in the end, because it's going to make a big difference on tree removal and everything else.
Yep, the information regarding the five-year maintenance and monitoring plan and the bond is still pending. The, they have removed the white pine from the prior tree replacement, he said he's still waiting for more information regarding the tree replacement, as we discussed. He said that the information submitted regarding tree information is still considered incomplete and requires more detailed information that follows the criteria outlined in within Chapter 121.
Okay.
The arborist did that work, I think it was awful that that location information didn't get submitted, we'll fix that for Steve.
Okay, so next steps, obviously, we need completed applications in the EAF and all that sort of thing. In the meantime, I guess what we can do is perhaps take a look at scheduling a site plan. Were there other comments, by the way? I don't want to cut off comments or thoughts at this point. Members may have.
Yeah, I have an observation, it's, I guess, really a question about this that concerns This, Robin Hill Road is a private road, right? And it's held jointly by the abutting property owners?
No, this issue was-
We need to speak into the microphone.
Who owns it?
Right on. This was researched at length by a combination of Brad Schwartz, who's working for me, and also working with Ms. Gray. And it turns out that that was part of the original subdivision of Kisco Park Drive, going back to-
I remember all this, right?
Going back to 1896. And it is, it's actually, it was owned by the organization that did that subdivision.
The developer.
Yes. And it's not owned by the property owners on both sides, and that issue was resolved, and we don't have that problem.
So is it- Wait, I'm sorry, I'm sorry. So, so you don't own it, the abutting property owners don't own it, so who owns it?
Um.
I mean, you can't prove property, you can't do anything on property unless you have either ownership, or you have the approval of the owner to do it.
There's easement rights in place.
So there are easement rights that are shared by the abutters?
Correct.
Okay. And easement not only to use it, but to improve it?
Exactly, yes.
Yes, okay. So here's, that's, that's just to get a little history back in front of us.
Yeah.
So my real concern is that it just, this looks like a flag lot to me.
Excuse me?
A flag lot.
Oh, no, it's not, it's-
Well, it looks like a flag lot to me.
That's why I want to show it to you.
No, 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 I'm-
Yeah.
That's, this is a two-dimensional issue.
This has to do with the plan itself.
Yeah.
Do you understand what the term "flag lot" refers to?
Yeah, when you, when you have like a little piece of land that goes out to a road, or something like that.
Where you have, yes, you have a driveway.
Yeah.
The property would have legal frontage on a public road.
Yeah.
But then you have a driveway to a house which is behind, right?
Yeah.
A house which actually has presence on the road.
Right.
And that's, that's, I don't know if it's a technical term or a term of art, but it's, we know it as a flag lot. And it's something that we are really discouraged to approve.
I understand what you're talking about. All of Kisco Park was developed this way. There were these streets that were, you know, that were mapped streets, they were on the town map.
That's different.
And there were houses, see, for example, if you, this is on Robin Hill going south from Kisco Park Drive. If you go the other way, north, there's, it's exactly analogous, and you have three houses built there, using the driveway that was built on, on Robin Hill Road.
That, that may be true.
Yeah.
I'm not doubting that, I haven't seen it, to make sure that, that your understanding of what you're seeing would be a flag lot or not a flag lot.
Yeah.
I'm talking about what you're asking us to approve here. And I, I would be interested to know whether this would be, could be defined as a flag lot, because it has all the appearances, and let me just finish this, this statement here, and get it out. This has all the appearances of a flag lot. And the, it's really, there are two concerns about flag lots. One is that you don't have houses that are behind other houses.
Yeah.
Right? Because you got to, you have a house which is sort of looking into the back, in the backyard of another house.
Yeah.
The other is an aesthetic, which the town really is concerned about. So, I'm sorry.
No, I'm sorry, I don't mean to interrupt.
I know, I take a long time, I just want to get it all out.
I don't mean to interrupt, because I have this bad habit of anticipating sometimes, yeah.
Right, so what we have is essentially a driveway-
Yeah.
-that takes you to a house, which is behind another house. If, if Robin Hill Road was actually an improved, an improved street, right, with, with streetlights and a, in a, in a real sort of road, the way private roads for developments are often done.
Yeah.
And that house would appear to have a frontage on a, on a town street, on a private street, on a development street. But instead, it's a driveway that leads to it. So from my perspective, what I see here, what I interpret from the drawings, is it looks like a flag lot to me, and I'm not sure that that's, that that's something that we, at least we ought to be talking about it, as the consequence of the plan.
But what I'd like to ask is that you reserve judgment of that, do you see it? Because I think when you see it, I think it'll become clear that that's not the way it'll be, and that it's totally in character with everything else done at Kisco Park.
I don't care about the character of Kisco Park so much right now.
Yeah.
It, it, it may be a flag lot which is not offensive.
Yeah.
But I'm interested in whether it actually meets the definition of a flag lot. For me, that's the first threshold question. And then whether, because we need to recognize it for what it is, if it is. If it isn't, then that's fine. But we need to at least recognize it for what it is before we decide to approve the application or not approve the application. And we have discretion in this matter, I believe, but I'd like to be sure that we have this in front of us, so we know what we're doing.
Yeah, I'm sorry, Brad Schwartz isn't here tonight, he had two conflicts, not even one, he had two conflicts, and apologized that he couldn't make it tonight. But I think that this issue was worked through, and I think that, you know, we need to get you more information perhaps, but I don't think this meets the definition of a flag lot.
If I can address it, I think I can clear this up.
Thank you very much.
My question was really-
I know. So, Robin Hill Road is considered a street under the definitions in our code. I'm sorry, folks, can you speak up, it's really hard to hear what the fans going.
Robin Hill Road is considered a street under the definitions in our code. This lot has frontage on Robin Hill Road. A street is defined not only as an improved right-of-way, not only as a public right-of-way, but also a private right-of-way that's shown on a plat filed in the county clerk's office. This paper street, private, unimproved paper street is shown on a plat filed in the county clerk's office, which makes it a street under our code, which this lot has frontage on. I understand your point about the aesthetic of it appearing as a flag lot. Typically, flag lots, you have fee ownership, you know, common fee owners, ownership between the lot to be improved, coming down the pole, so to speak, portion of the flag, down to the, down to a street. Here, the street actually fronts on, on the lot, so this, this, in my opinion, would not be a flag lot.
Okay, so I guess to, let's see if I can-
At least in the legal sense of the term, but I think, I understand your point about the aesthetic, the aesthetic component of it.
So you can have a lot which has, just take a required 100-foot frontage, or 50-foot frontage, right? And you're saying that if- frontage, right? And you're saying that if that development of that lot has, using that 50-foot frontage, a driveway to go past the abutting properties that have houses actually on the street, facing the street, to an area of that lot behind those other houses, that's, and somebody wants to put a house there, that that's not a flag lot?
I'm sorry, I wasn't quite following the plan metric description. But here, the pole portion of the flag lot that I think you're referring to is not part of, the fee title is not part of the lot that's subject to this application.
I'm sorry. Whatever, I see, I understand.
That's, I can provide you with-
No, I understand what you're saying. No, no, okay, that'd be great. But I think it's important to sort of understand what I'm looking for in the memo, okay? Because what I, what I understand is that if there is a lot which has legal frontage in order to develop that lot, right? But the lot actually, the configuration of the lot actually is a pole with a flag. And the pole attaches to, legally gives you the frontage to do it. And the lot has a flag, right? And somebody decides to put a house back there with a driveway. In effect, the aesthetics of that and the consequences of that is that's a flag lot. It's a flag lot, even though it has legal frontage. It's a flag lot, I believe. That would be what I'd ask you to look at. I think that that would be called a flag lot. So the fact that this has frontage on a Robin Hill Road, which you say is a legal street for the purposes of development, doesn't make any difference because we still have a driveway which is attaching to this lot. It has all the appearances of a flag lot.
It performs as a flag lot.
Yeah, yeah. But just to speak to the appearance of it, the frontage on Robin Hill is actually 200 feet.
But that's the other end of there.
Yeah, I mean, I think what's very interesting, looking at this, and we don't have all the homes here, but it seems to me that we don't see, when I raise the word "performance," all of the other property owners who front on this street do not in fact access the street. So therefore, it doesn't behave as a street, even though it might legally be a street. And therefore, to Tom's point, where we see homes here, they are actually working off of other streets. And therefore, whether it's a legal street or not, this is obviously something for Jennifer to guide us on. I think Tom raises a very interesting point in that the performance, the way this behaves, is still as a flag lot. That's important.
It's, I think it's a very interesting point you're raising. And I'm, you know, I'm understanding what you're saying. But just, you know, another way to think about it is you actually have a driveway coming up existing. The driveway comes up, and then the rich property is accessed by taking a left turn off that driveway to their house. This is, this is really, all we're really doing is extending that existing driveway a little bit.
But that driveway is fronting on Crow Hill Road. That's where it's accessed.
And the rich property has frontage on it.
Yeah. Can I approach? Can I show you what I'm talking about?
If I may, this is really disadvantageous because it's not up on the screen and nobody can see it.
Yeah, this is not good.
For which we apologize.
Right. And I think that it might be behoove the planning board to schedule a site visit so you can take a look at it. And then the next appearance of the applicant before the board with corrected information, with complete information, and most importantly, with plans that you all can talk to together.
Outstanding idea.
Okay.
And Jennifer, if you, if you sort of take a look at this, give us, as you had offered to do.
Yeah.
That would be good. Because I think that, I mean, we may, we may go ahead and approve it, but I'd like to be sure that we know what we're approving.
Yeah. Again, I apologize for us not having any stuff up on the screen.
Well, this is not a public hearing, but very often it seems that there are some interested members of the public. So we'll take one or two questions only. Again, this is not a public hearing. It's just a courtesy, really. So.
Appreciate it.
And please, if there are any questions, please don't repeat them at this point.
Don Rossi, thank you for the opportunity, Mr. Kirkwood. Appreciate it. We submitted a letter today on behalf of the riches, which emphasizes some of what we believe are the major considerations for the board. So you, I'm sure, maybe have not had a chance to really digest that. I hope you will. We would welcome a site walk also. We would appreciate being invited to it when we go.
That's up to the applicant as a-
Right.
Okay.
We would like to. And we think the site walk will bear out a lot of the bases for the concerns that your consultants have raised and which we have raised with regard to the configuration of the lots. We, although we don't have the plans, Mr. Curly, I certainly hear what you're saying. Whether the access comes in from Crow Hill or from Kisco Park, the configuration of the lot still gives the appearance of a flag lot. But technically, from a technical standpoint, I don't think they, that it would be considered a flag lot under the code. But in that question that you've raised is really the essence of what I think your board is doing on this matter. We have an 1896 filed map that was filed, and a neighborhood was developed without the benefits of a planning board to review the design of lots and the road configuration. We have a legislature that's included a section in town law, which is the one that Jennifer was referring to, that talks about streets shown on ancient filed maps being considered streets under your code. But that provision specifically says that lots should be accessed via roads or driveways designed to the satisfaction of the planning board. So that is where the inherent discretion is in your board to look at the roads here and to determine from a 2019 planning perspective, what is the best way to go on this. That discretion is reinforced by a specific provision in your code. It was in the prior master plan. I'm not certain if it's in the current master plan, but it's certainly in your zoning code that says you should, wherever possible, route traffic to local roads and not to collect erodes. And this situation in, and I've practiced all over the towns in northern Westchester, was one of the best examples of why a provision like that is in your code. Because access from, from the Robin Hill Road, proposed access, down a slope that descends 20 feet from the high point at the crest of the hill after the grading that's shown on the plans, a 20-foot drop down to Crow Hill Road does not make sense when there is a feasible alternative, whether it's more expensive or not, that fits neatly into your current planning considerations and your, exactly what you'd be doing if this subdivision was being developed today. So your questions with regard to the lot configuration are very good ones. And there are provisions in state law and in your town code that support the concept of what I believe you're raising. So that, we welcome a site visit. We'd be, we would hope to be invited to it. And we think when you're in the field, these things will be even more apparent. Waterline coming in from a local road that would benefit other properties and provide increased fire protection, potentially, if the house cannot be flip-flopped, potentially a slightly longer driveway, but a more gradual slope to a local road that then would have access out to Crow Hill Road at a much safer and more manageable intersection at what I believe is Main Street. So that's one general area of comments. Secondly, as several of the comments of the applicant have been labeled as misleading in some of the reports, I would like to say that statements with regard to tree cutting, I believe, are also misleading and, as I say in my letter, disingenuous, okay? I have pictures, which I would like to leave with the board, happy to distribute them to you, pictures of tree cutting that went on, on the Serlin property at the subject driveway and up the hill of tree cutting. So to state that, number one, the plan to go out to Crow Hill Road will result in less tree cutting than the other alternative, does not take into account the fact that tree cutting and grading have already occurred out there without benefit of any permits. And now we are being told that it's going to be less disturbance to go out to Crow Hill Road because less trees are going to be cut. So I'd like to leave this with you, Mr. Kirkwood, if I could.
Yep, for the record, sorry.
There's also pictures, I'll go back to the mic, and bring me this one back. These are pictures of Campbell Engineering employees at the time test pits were being dug. One of them clearly is on the rich property, not on the Serlin property or on the right-of-way. So we'd like to make sure that this is taken into account when additional test pits are performed. And I'd like to submit that. And I'd also like to say that any inferences of libel per se, as far as the riches submission, are simply unfounded, given those photographs, just for the record, as Sabrina mentioned.
Can we open that to the screen?
Yeah. And I can, I will distribute via email. We can send copies of those. And as I did with the letter today, I'll copy Brad with it as a courtesy. One we would expect from Brad also as we proceed with this. One or two more seconds.
Would it be possible for me to see these pictures?
Sure.
Thank you.
Thank you. Lastly, and so we don't duplicate time while Mr. Serlin's looking at those, we'd also like to be invited at the time of the, of a meeting among the consultants, the fire department, the Department of Public Works, to have, to have input and to see what transpires at that. So we would appreciate being invited to that.
Jennifer, is that considered to be a public meeting or is that a private consultation?
It's not a public meeting because the board is, you know, the board is not going to be present. I'll take it in.
Okay. We'll take that under advisement.
I just say not a public meeting, but that does not preclude members of the public, especially potentially impacted neighbors from having representatives. So I think it is permissible.
Well, also, those meetings will be out in the public. So we'll let Jennifer say, and we'll see what the applicant says about that. We don't normally do that.
Understood, understood. So that's it. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Okay. Anyone else? We'll take one more comment if there is one. If not, don't have to do it.
There'll be more ample time to do it?
Yes, this will eventually go to a public hearing, and then we go.
If I could, I'm just learning of this. Apparently-
So this will be the second?
Second. Graciously appreciated. Thank you. Apparently, there was litigation at the time of the tree cutting that occurred.
Correct.
And so these pictures should come as no surprise to Mr. Serlin.
And this activity occurred what year? There's no date or anything on it. We have years?
Well, this is September of 2016. Again, this is-
Yeah, but this one doesn't-
I will, well, what I will do is when I send it in, I will supplement it. Thanks, hon. They'll obviously have the information.
Mr. Rossi, if I may ask you to submit the photographs that you submitted tonight to my attention so that we can file them and then circulate them accordingly, that would be, that would be appreciated.
Certainly. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Can I just speak to the litigation here? Because there are so many lies coming out of his mouth that I'm sorry, but it really-
Just a minute. Just a minute. I would appreciate very much that you speak in terms of facts-
Yes.
-and leave your opinions for later or just flat out.
I, I'm sorry. I apologize. I just, this whole thing upset me. I've never cut a tree here. Absolutely, I've never cut a tree. When we were starting to do this process, Mr. Campbell sent some of his people to dig a hole in Robin Hill Road. And the purpose of digging a hole in Robin Hill Road, and this was witnessed by the town, this was, we not only had Mr. Campbell's people there, but we had a person from the town, I forget his name, what?
Robert Terry.
Yes. He was there to witness the whole thing. They carefully used the maps, very carefully used the maps. There was no question they were in Robin Hill Road. Not, I mean, there'd be no purpose of trying to see if we could, you know, bury something on a rich property. We were in Robin Hill Road. And what happened is we dug a big hole and we did perk tests. We did the whole thing properly. Subsequent to that, I was sued by the riches, claiming that I damaged their property. And this case came here to town court, and it ended up being dismissed because it was, it was just not true. I was not on a rich property, and we didn't do any damage. So, I mean, there was nothing. It was dismissed. They didn't collect a penny. And that was the result. I personally believe that their litigation was just trying to put another roadblock in front of me so that I couldn't subdivide the property. But I apologize again for being a little bit emotional about this. But I've been going through this for a long time. And it's just, sometimes it's a little hard for me to deal with. I apologize.
Okay. Thank you.
Just for the record, Terry goes out and looks at deaves, but it's not our responsibility to stake out the property.
Right.
And those deaves and tests that he did look at were clearly within a right-of-way of the Robin Hill Road. You might have been referring to things that happened years ago when Richard Volcary was here, which Terry was not here at that time. So I just wanted to clarify the record.
Absolutely. There's no question we were in Robin Hill.
And if I may say, we need to just, for future, for future reference, this ability goes both ways.
Yep.
To suggest that there's litigation and then to find out that the suit was dismissed, to talk, we're not going to hear any more tonight on the subject from, I don't, unless the chairman says so, from anybody. But when you come back, you are free to talk about these matters again. But to suggest that there's, the suggestion seems to be there's litigation that was dismissed, but litigation was brought up as a factor in this, in our, in our decision here. And let's just not do that kind of a thing. Just please, let's just not.
No, not enough.
You come back. Come back. You're free to talk next time. I think that-
Well, maybe. If it's informal, maybe not. But you'll be free to talk in a public hearing.
Understood. The pictures were submitted to show-
Excuse me.
Please.
We're finished.
You're done.
We're finished. This is a courtesy.
Understood.
And the courtesy seems to be, in my mind, over. I don't feel like listening to a debate on past things. So please, write a letter if you feel that there's more to say.
Does the planning board want to set a site walk?
Yes. I think that's the next matter of, for us, from our standpoint, is to set a date with cooperation with the applicant to set a date for a site visit. And in terms of scheduling this next, we just have to wait for the applicant to submit the information that we set forth that we need before it can move forward with the application. So when that's done, we can schedule it. But in the meantime, what looks good for a site visit?
And before you set the date, I would request that the applicant identify where they're proposing to put the house, the driveway, the water line, et cetera, so you have stakes when you do the site walk.
Basically stake it. I understand.
Right. And so the question is, how quickly can you have that done so the, so that the board has a clear understanding of the plan when they're out in the field versus when they can go out and do the walk?
Michael, can you do that within a week?
Can you?
No, we're not going to stake it out. We're not surveyors. But you can have to stake out. But remember that this isn't, doesn't have to be done by a surveyor. But the house has to be squared up generally. Everything has to be shown generally where it is.
Right, right.
You're not going to build by it. You're going to show these people where things are.
Can I request that you speak into the microphone, Michael?
Oh, sorry.
Michael, how are you going to know where the property line is if a surveyor-
There's points out there that you can work off of.
It was surveyed.
It was surveyed. It was all surveyed. So.
Stakeout, they did a stakeout?
They did stakeouts and everything. And there's marks, and there's everything.
Yeah, Dan Merritt surveyed.
Why don't you submit those stakeout maps so we can confirm that they were done by-
Well, where the stakes are, yeah.
Well, but those are, those are the parcel lines for the subdivision, right? That's not the building lines, proposed building line, is it?
No, they're going to have to measure off those things to get those.
I understand that. Yeah. But, so, so the subdivision line stakes are in the ground, right?
Property lines.
Yes.
Property lines, yeah.
Existing and the proposed subdivision.
Big corners and stuff like that.
Yeah, Dan Merritt sat his crew out there two years ago.
Right. So from that, somebody needs to tape off where the building and all the other major site improvements were made.
Absolutely.
That's all we're asking. You know what we're asking?
Yep.
The only question is, by when do you think that can happen?
Well- Well, I mean, I think what Michael's...
Microphone, please.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay. It's just people want to hear you.
I think what Michael's saying is that he's not a surveyor, so he can show you approximately, but I mean, it might be off by, you know, six inches or something like that, that's what, it's fine. So, you really just need to work off Dan Merritt's survey...
Yeah, yeah.
And then put the stakes in. Could you have...
I don't have stakes.
What?
I don't have stakes. I don't have land. I have nothing. Because I go surveying.
Could you guys just figure this out? Get back to us. This is crazy.
I'd recommend that you maybe contact your surveyor.
Yeah, it's a good idea.
Have him restake them with flagging and lots.
What, what, could, could we set a date, maybe in two or three weeks, and I'll get it done?
Yeah, we could, let's do three weeks to make sure that you guys buy the stakes and string and stuff.
Yeah. I apologize for not being, not knowing ahead of time what Michael could do and what he couldn't.
It's October, right? Early October.
Is that for the 11th and 12th?
Oh, it's like Dan Merritt's...
We have a surveyor who's licensed to do that.
Is that the 5th and 6th, or 12th, 13th?
Well, 12th, 13th, is that the holiday weekend?
Yes.
Right?
Good advice. Thank you.
So, I can't do the 5th. You want to do, give you more time to buy your equipment. The, what's that, 19th? Is it Saturday?
Saturday night.
Is it past the holidays? Are we okay? Are we sad?
It's past all holidays. October 19th?
Yeah.
Hold on.
It's Saturday. Is that okay, Greg? Do you have...
I'm free after 11:00.
After 11:00?
Tentatively okay, but I think I'm out of the country. I have to check.
Okay. Or you're here the week, two weeks before?
Yes, I am.
Okay. Well, is there, is there any appetite for doing it over the holiday weekend?
Yes.
The Columbus Day weekend?
I could do with that.
Okay.
Okay?
Set a date with that.
12th.
After 11:00.
After 11:00? 11:15?
I could do 11:00.
Oh, okay, 11:00.
Yeah, I can, I can make it by 11:00, I'm pretty sure.
Okay.
11:05.
Is that a Sunday or Saturday?
It's a Saturday. Is that okay? October 12th?
October 12th.
Yeah.
Got it.
October 12th.
Okay.
What time is it?
11:00.
I'll get the stakes.
Yep, okay. Okay.
Thank you.
Very good.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you very much.
Same, gentlemen, thank you.
Yep.
Bye, now.
Okay. We move to our next item, and that is the resolution regarding the homeland, oh, I'm sorry, we have the, you're back. Oliveri, I'm sorry. Oliveri, public hearing?
I have one, too.
This is the request for an existing accessory apartment located 541 King Street. So, these are three years old, telling us perhaps nothing or something. We don't have any dates. What happened here? Okay. Sorry.
Good evening. How are you?
Good. So, we're here to finalize and legalize an apartment that's supposed to be built in the, or in the basement, I guess, in ground four, 541 King Street. So, we have comments from, first of all, I guess, we haven't, we already opened the public hearing? Maybe we did that before?
We did.
Yeah, yeah.
Excellent. So, Sabrina, you got comments?
I do, I'm looking. Yes, I do. Thank you. So, the, the application is before the planning board to legalize an existing accessory apartment. The size of the apartment is currently 994 square feet, which is less than 1,000 square feet. However, it's greater than 30% of the total area of the dwelling, which is, which is 735 square feet.
Is that the threshold, 735?
It is, yeah.
That's the 30% threshold.
That's the 30% threshold, 735.
Do we know how much over we are? Like, is that, are we like 5% over, or 400% over?
Well, well, here, here, we're like, more like 5% over, but, but one of the questions in looking at the plans, Mr. Oliveri, there looks to be a huge storage room or something. Is that all used, attributed to the accessory apartment, or is that to the main house? So, I think the apartment is actually smaller than the entire floor, the area that is being shown in the bottom of the dwelling. So, we just need to identify and exclude that area which does not apply to the apartment, and determine what the size of the apartment is in relation to that, so you can have a better idea of how much over.
Got you.
So, so clarification on the plans needs to be given.
But if that's not counted in the space, the overage, if any, will be even less.
Correct. Correct.
Now, part of the space is utility room, so that...
That's what I mean.
Yeah, that needs to be delineated because that doesn't count.
Correct. Correct.
And those spaces can't be converted to beds...
Correct.
Because there are no windows and stuff like that.
Correct.
Exactly.
Exactly. No additional development is proposed. The submitted plan depicts six parking spaces, two of which are located inside the garages. Three spaces are required by the code, so it has ample parking on the site, I believe. Bob has identified additional information regarding that. This is a type 2 action in accordance with SEACR, so no further environmental review is required. The building and development coverage, they are in conformance with the town codes, however, the conformance table, the numbers need to be corrected. There's a maximum development coverage that's permitted, so there's some errors on the plans in the table, which just need to be corrected based on our calculations. In addition, the zoning district should be reflected on the plan in the zoning conformance table, and this is, just to confirm to the planning board, this has been noticed accordingly, so you are an official public examiner.
Right.
That is the extent of my comments.
Bob, you heard some comments?
A few. I looked at the old subdivision map, and evidently, maybe had a note on there saying that the town had to have a look at the sightlines and make sure they were cleared accordingly. I would imagine, since that's about 40 years ago, some of the growth has grown in since then.
May have come back.
I would think so. Looks a little bit tight on one side, so I would recommend that you get those sightlines staked out.
Once we stake them out, are we permitted to clear them, or does somebody else have to now review it first?
Come out there, and it was okay. I'll go there and take a look at it, make a determination.
Okay.
Before you go crazy, I don't like to get in all the trees, but you know, you might have some trees, in my opinion, that might be back inside technically the sightline. Excuse me, however, based on ash-toe distances, might not have to come out. So, that's why, stake it out first, give me a call, I'll meet with you, take a look at it.
Are the trees, are these trees, or is it trouble with that?
Well, I'd like to keep the trees as much as I can, because the trees, you know, sometimes it's going to, depending type of vegetation and any type of, especially the evergreens, sometimes you'd have to be trimmed, so stake it out first, I'll take a look at it, help you out with that.
Okay, very good. Trees, shrubs, and weeds.
Number two, basically, you show many spaces, which is great, but I think you should show a dedicated spot for the accessory apartment, so the...
That's not a problem.
And it knows exactly where they'll park, and once you know where they're going to park, just make certain that the car can turn around in a safe manner and come out onto King Street. That's number two. And I would recommend showing the existing water service line and sanitary sewer. Obviously, this is all on the King Street, the sewer district, so the amount of bedrooms doesn't come in a full year.
Okay. So, those are not the water and service and sewer lines, and that one plot, one plant up here? Or is that just the...
They're totally wired, I don't know.
I saw one up there.
The northern's.
Yeah, they're on the park.
And run it plain.
Looked you the first eye. If they run there, that's great, if not...
I forgive you. Thank you.
That's the first applicant who's forgiven us. Lord knows, there's been a lot of forgiving that should have been granted, but, okay.
If they are there, thank you.
I think they are.
Yeah.
Okay. None of these are showstoppers, and we can condition any of these, right? And the same with Sabrina's comments, I believe, right? Okay. Go ahead, please.
I just have a question. Sabrina's out here, but maybe you know, Bob, I just, has the building inspector, did he look at these before they came to us?
I don't know.
Because I have a question about, and I could be wrong about this, but the area, living, dining, kitchen, I just, I'm not sure that this window meets code. I mean, I think that, unless I'm mistaken, there's a certain percentage of floor area that needs to be in a window for three reasons. One is if you need it for emergency egress, another is for natural light, and another is for ventilation. And this, maybe I'm wrong, but this window looks awfully small for the, for the floor area.
Well, we certainly can do light and ventilation calculation, that's not a problem, and as far as egress is concerned, I don't think there's a requirement for direct egress from a living room, dining room, and kitchen. It's only for bedrooms.
No, I think you're fine on egress. It's, it's the light and air that I'm surprised at this math, the code.
Well, we'll certainly, we'll certainly add that to the, to the drawing.
You may have to, you may have to...
Folks, I mean, obviously, Tom will look at this prior to the repeat, and everyone will write this.
Yeah, they have to, they'll, the next step is, it's an existing structure, but they'll have to submit, you know, a building permit application, pay fines for doing it in retro fact, because he will need a C of O for the accessory apartment. As part of that, the building inspector will examine the plans and make sure that all the fire safety building will be in there.
I just, right, no, I, I'm sure, we get done sooner or later, I just wondered if he had already looked at it.
Yeah. No, he has not looked at it.
Okay. Good. All right. Are there any comments from the public on this application? Okay, not seeing any. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Do we have to take any other steps? It's a type 2, so we don't have to take any environmental steps, so is the next step to schedule or ask the staff to draw up a resolution of approval, some of these conditions?
Still move?
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Is there anything else that we need to do at this point? Cut down the shrubs?
No, weeds, get the weeds first.
Okay. All right, so we're all set?
Okay.
Yeah, see, we will attempt to have the resolution for the, dare I say, the October 1st meeting. We will attempt. If not, we will be on the next, the following meeting.
Okay.
Okay.
So, basically, you're, you're done.
Thank you.
Well, we, we need the resolution of approval.
Well, we do.
Yes.
You're welcome. Have a good night.
Yep, good night now. And now, we have our last item, which is somewhere in the middle of the agenda, but the last one today. This is the resolution for Homeland Towers LLC, T-Mobile Northeast LLC, New Singular Wireless PCS LLC, Towne &amp; Newcastle, application for a special permit, wetlands permit, tree removal permit, and stormwater pollution prevention plan for wireless telecommunications services facility, Orange Lane. Here we are. So, do you want, we just got these.
Yes, so you have before you a slightly revised resolution. You received the draft resolution in, in principle on Friday. This resolution was slightly revised just to change the approval authority of the setbacks, the setback flavors and setback variances. It was a sovereign preparation of the resolution that, due to the adoption by the town board of the revised wireless telecommunications law in July of this year, that the town board put a limitation on your discretion to reduce the applicable setbacks for wireless telecommunications facilities. So, whereas before, you could reduce the setback literally to zero, here, the, the town board and the new local law has placed a cap on the reduction that you can provide for setbacks, and that is the setback requirements of the district in which the telecommunications facility is located. There are enhanced setbacks that apply to a wireless telecommunications facility. It's either twice the underlying setback, or the height of the tower, whichever one is greater. Here, in most instances, it's the height of the tower that's the applicable setback for the tower, which is 150 feet here. So, you can reduce setbacks from 150 feet down to the minimum setback in this district, which is 60 feet for front, 35 for side, and 50 for rear.